Council meeting Thursday. Mr. Morris.
Yeah, I would definitely say that's true.
Yes, I can see that.
Oh, good, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Second Tuesday.
Well, that was me too. They decided to put the dark league together, so. I mean, I went through it, I was twenty-one and twenty-two during the dark league, Rose City.
Oh. Oh, yeah, I guess it'll be over by then, though.
There's only eight or ten people.
I'll meet him two weeks.
All right, if we get the meeting started, if we start with the pledge, and then a moment of silent reflection, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Kirk, do we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Norman.
Present.
Councilman Stahl.
Present.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Here.
Councilman Hitt.
Here.
President Peters.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilman McDaniels.
Here.
Councilman Eads.
Here.
All right, everybody get a chance to look at the February fifteenth minutes. It should be also, no, actually, it should be the March.
Seventh.
March seventh minutes.
Peters.
Any questions or concerns with those? Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, there's no public hearings, no communications or announcements. Next up be audience concerns. We'll get the list. Vincent, if you could come up. We have your name and address for the record, please.
All righty, Vincent Morris, one thirty-four North Main. Good evening, everybody, Rex, Bill, council. Last time I was here, I spoke a little bit about the National Safety Council and the program that they sponsor called Walk Friendly Communities. And I was thinking how special it would be when you rode into London, maybe from any direction, and there was a sign, big green sign that said, right next to maybe a sign that says, John Doe Checker Champion of nineteen hundred, there was a sign that said, the National Safety Council recognizes London, Ohio as a walk-friendly community. And we award London, Ohio, the Pedestrian Safe Designation. And there's a lot of steps involved to achieve that award. And as I stated before, you can go to their website and you can look at different cities that have achieved that award and see what they've done. And a lot of these other cities are big metropolis areas, maybe. And you might maybe wonder how London compares to a big metropolis area to be in a small town. But London's growing quite a bit, and it's not quite the small town that maybe it used to be, and that's maybe a good thing. You know, all this development that's going on outside of town, the more I think about it, I think maybe it's gonna be a good thing for the city. If somebody's willing to invest that type of money in London, it kind of tells me that they value London quite a bit in to put that kind of money into our town. Of course, it's an investment for them, and which is expected to be, but I think it could benefit even the downtown area. I've heard that maybe they put shopping centers out there, maybe, I don't know. But even so, I think all that development that's happening can benefit our downtown area. There's a town I'm gonna reference called Milford, Ohio. I don't know if anybody here has ever been to Milford, Ohio. They have a very similar history to London. They're the county seat of Claremont County, and they have a historic downtown area, what's left of it. Just like we have a small downtown area, what's left to our downtown. And they really cherish their downtown area. And when I say what's left to it, there's only maybe a fourth of the city, of the buildings and businesses, or of the buildings that used to be there. Just like London, London downtown used to be from the Dairy Queen down by the tracks, all the way to the Y here, all the way down Main Street to DeWires, and that way on Center Street, that was the downtown area, and it was flooded with businesses. So a lot of times when people say they want London to be like it used to be, it'll never be like it used to be, it can't be. But I think what they're maybe referencing to is people coming downtown. And I think, I know I talked about, a little bit about the speed limit on Main Street before. I think, like Milford, they slow the speed limit down as slow as possible, just on those two or three blocks that they called the historic downtown. Just for safety reasons, and just recently, what I read was that they license, since the parking is so limited downtown, that they license golf carts for downtown usage. They have a, they have a city manager, and they don't have a mayor, but they've implemented golf carts to transport people downtown. I don't know how that program works, but that's what they do, and they have a very small town, just like ours, but the historic downtown. And another thing about Milford is that they are now surrounded by big development, shopping stores, completely all around Milford, and it does nothing but help that downtown area, because all those people that moved in, and all those shopping areas, they don't have anything that downtown could offer. And downtown doesn't have what they could offer, and all those people love to go downtown Milford and park, and walk around, and go in all these craft stores, or whatever specialty shops. And that's kind of what London's turning into, and I really like that. I spoke a little bit about the speed limit and Main Street a little bit. I, I was wondering, Bill, you're here, maybe you can help answer this a little bit. How many lanes is Main Street, like say from High Street down to the park? Does anybody have any?
Supposed to be two.
Two lanes? Does that include the parking lanes? Okay, so if you include the parking lanes, it's four lanes. That's the way I look at it, but you have people constantly passing people. Cause there's no, no lines other than the center line, so it turns into six lanes. I see passing and, all the time, and people pass on the right on Main Street, they don't pass on the left. I know I talked about, I would like to see the speed limit reduced from the hospital all the way through town, both directions, twenty-five. That may be extreme, but that's, I think that's good. Does anybody know what the speed limit is from? Okay, coming into town, as you're coming into town from the north, in, close to DeWires, there's your twenty-five mile an hour sign. So that takes you through town, but once you hit High Street, what's the speed limit? That's right. But it's never enforced, people drive forty-five and fifty miles an hour, it's forty-five, it's not enforced there. I think this pedestrian safe program, there's three points to this program, if you go to their website. It's the community involvement, sort of like Mr. Norman had the other night. He had, did you have a town hall meeting for your?
For Ward Three, yeah, it was about a month ago.
Oh, it was a month ago, okay.
Yeah, hey, it's been a quick month.
So, it takes community involvement, but you guys might already do, I'm kind of new to this anyway, I haven't followed you too much. Take community involvement, they recognize things that be, need to be corrected, safety concerns. That group takes these concerns to the council, and the council presents, or makes laws, ordinances, whatever, and it takes the law enforcement to enforce those laws. So if you have speed limits that aren't being enforced, it kind of makes you look weak, it makes you look weak. I remember years ago, does anybody remember New Rome?
Yeah.
What did they call that?
Speed trap.
Speed trap.
A speed trap. But a trap is covert, they had signs up, so it was a speed enforcement.
Yeah.
I think we should have more speed enforcement here, no matter what the speed limit, if it's twenty-five, it should, we shouldn't let people drive twenty-five and fifty, or fifty miles an hour. I don't know. Is, any questions or anything? You know, one more thing I want to touch, you know, there's gonna be a lot of more activity, maybe at the park. Could there, could there be parking all down Main Street like that, like they have downtown? That would, that would create more parking, like, what do they call that, diagonal parking? That would put more cars, be able to park more cars, and it would still allow the two lanes in both directions. Just a thought. And that's about all I have, really.
If I could address, the ORC, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Ohio Revised Code, speed limit for downtown, in any downtown area is twenty-five, and then as you go out, it usually increases thirty-five until you get out, and then it'll increase forty-five or what have you. I do know there's a problem, and I'm on the Safety Committee, and we will be addressing it. I work at Funeral Home, and I noticed the other day when I was out there, there were some cars really motivating out through there. So we're going to address that, and I know where you live is right in that area, so we will take care of that. And going back, you said there was golf carts, was that in Milford, Ohio?
Milford, Ohio, they've licensed golf carts for downtown, because they said their parking is so restricted down there that it helps shuffle people in and out for whatever occasion.
Okay. And if you'd like to come to the Safety Meeting, it'll be in this little room next door here. It'll be April the ninth, it's on Tuesday evening, it's at six o'clock.
Hey Rex, can I share the information from the, so Tuesday, we actually, our administration had a meeting with the state, with Superintendent Bill Long, Rex, and the mayor, and then I got to sit in. And we actually, it was actually brought up about, we'd like, we asked them that we would like to have the speed limit changed from, is that Old Springfield? Starting at Old Springfield and coming into town. And they basically kind of told us, you know, we gotta do the research, pretty much, right? Is that what, I mean, that's kind of what I got out of it, that there's a statutory speed limit, and then there's another type of speed limit. But they didn't seem too adverse to it, right?
It's, it's a state highway going through town, Main Street is, so therefore, speed limits are regulated by the state of Ohio. In order for us to change that speed limit, we'd have to perform a traffic study, which is gonna cost the city money to do a traffic study, and then it would take a resolution from council to present to ODOT, and then to seek their permission. I have, however, done some more research, and I think there's a way we can fix that ourselves, we'll probably talk about it in Safety.
So, but just so you know, we were listening the last time you were here.
Okay, thanks.
And it was brought up by our administration to the state.
And while I'm here, I think the police in this town do a great job, they do a great job, they really do.
Well, I'm sure they like to hear that.
Yeah, they do, I see that. And that's it.
Well, I do believe, and I said this to you in the hallway, that if you have that information to share with the members of the Service Committee, the, you said the National Safety Council.
Right, you go to their website, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you have that link and you want to email that to them, they'll find that a little easier.
Okay.
Or, or tell them to write it down, or go to the meeting, cause that's a different meeting you can go to.
Okay, okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Anita Lykens, you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Anita Lykens, one fifty-seven East First Street. We just voted, I'd like to read some excerpts from President Reagan's An All-Girl Address in January twentieth nineteen eighty-one. Not reading the whole thing, just some excerpts. "The business of our nation goes forward. These United States are confronted with an economic affliction of great proportions. We suffer from the longest and one of the most sustained inflations in our national history. It distorts our economic decisions, penalizes thrift, crushes the struggling young, and fixed-income elderly alike. It threatens to shatter the lives of millions of our people. So as we begin, let us take inventory. We are a nation that has a government, not the other way around. And this makes us special among the nations of the earth. Our government has no power except that granted it by the people. It is time to check and reverse the growth of government, which now shows sign of having grown beyond the consent of the governed. It is my intention to curb the size and influence of the federal establishment and to demand recognition of the distinction between the powers granted to the federal government and those reserved to the states or to the people. All of us need to be reminded that federal government did not create the states, the states created the federal government. So, now there will be no misunderstanding, it's not my intention to do away with government. It is rather to make it work, and work for us, not over us, to stand by our side, not right on our back. Government can and must provide opportunity, not smother it, foster productivity, not stifle it. If we look to the answer as to why for so many years we achieved so much as a nation, we prospered as no other people on earth, it was because here in this land, we unleashed the energy and the individual genius of man to a greater extent than has ever been done before. Freedom and dignity of the individual have been more available and assured here than in any other place in the entire earth. The price for this freedom at times has been high, but we have never been unwilling to pay that price. It is no coincidence that our present troubles parallel and are proportionate to the intervention intrusion in our lives that result from unnecessary and excessive growth of government. It is time for us to realize that we're too great of a nation to limit ourselves to small dreams. We're not, as some would have us believe, doomed to an inevitable decline. I do not believe in a fate that we will fall or we will fail as no matter what we do. I do believe in a fate that will fall on us if nothing that we do. So with all creative energy at our command, let us begin an era of national renewal. Let us renew our determination, our courage, and our strength, and let us renew our faith and our hope. We have every right to dream heroic dreams. Those who say that we're in a time when there are not heroes, they just don't know where to look. You can see heroes every day going in and out of factory gates, others, a handful in numbers, produce enough food to feed all of us, and then the world beyond. You meet heroes across the counter, and they're on both sides of that counter. There are entrepreneurs with faith in themselves and faith in an idea who create new jobs, new wealth, and new opportunity. There are individuals and families whose taxes support the government and whose voluntary gifts support church, charity, culture, art, and education. Their patriotism is quiet, but deep, their values sustain our national life. Each one of those markers, and these are talking about war markers, is the kind of, is referring to war markers going forward. Their lives ended in a place called Below Woods, the Argonne, Omaha Beach, Salerno, and halfway around the world on Guadalcanal, Terrolo, the Argonne, oh, I'm sorry, Pork Chop Hill, and the Chosen Reservoir, and in a hundred rice paddies and jungles of a place called Vietnam. Under one such marker lies a young man, Martin Treptow, who left his job in a small-town barber shop in nineteen seventeen to go to France with the famed Rainbow Division. There on the Western Front, he was killed trying to carry a message between battalions under heavy artillery fire. We're told that on his body was found a diary, on the fly leaf under the heading, My Pledge, he had written these words. "America must win this war, therefore I will work, I will save, I will sacrifice, I will endure. I will fight cheerfully and do my utmost, as if the issue of the whole struggle depended on me alone." "The crisis we are facing today does not require of us the kind of sacrifice that Martin Treptow and so many thousands of others were called upon to make. It does require, however, our best effort and our willingness to believe in ourselves and to believe in our capacity to perform great deeds, to believe that together with God's help, we can and will resolve the problems which now confront us. And after all, why shouldn't we believe that? We are Americans. God bless you and thank you."
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Sierra Beerball. You can state your name and address for the record, please.
Sierra Beerball, one Hillcrest Drive. Good evening, I am Sierra Beerball. I'm a dedicated member of our community, and I have supported this community through the arts, as well as volunteering frequently for London events. Tonight, I'm coming to you as a community member with concerns, who would be greatly and directly affected by the pickleball courts potentially being located in Cowling Park. My home and yard is connected to the park, and Cowling Park is currently where families can let their children play without too much of a safety concern, and it's where community events are held. I know that placing a sport such as pickleball at the park will draw a much rowdier and more adult crowd. This would be taking away from the safety of children and families. From previous experiences I've had with pickleball, it is often accompanied by drinking, loud cheering, fights and sports disputes, crowds to come and watch, and all of the excitement, good and bad, that come with sports. Cowling Park's upgrades over the years to accommodate children of all needs have been very successful. Children with sensory limits and those who are differently abled, community members, gained a place with the park to play and experience life. Adding a sport such as pickleball to the park, I feel, would create a lot of noise, draw crowds, and this environment would become something that all of the work previously was negated, because I think the park currently does serve a very important purpose. There is already a struggle with parking in Cowling Park, so I feel that introducing an activity that will draw more people there would only make this worse. The hospital needs to be easily accessible to emergency medical vehicles and to our community. Pickleball fields would be doubling or tripling the amount of traffic and parking needed for the park. And again, there are already issues with parking there. We also already have issues in the park with teens remaining in the park, playing around past dark or past park hours, and these teens are contributing to families limiting their children's park time already. And I think that bringing pickleball will perpetuate that issue and not correct it. Outside of community reasons, I have personal reasons as to why I believe there are better locations in London for a pickleball court than Cowling Park. I don't hate pickleball, I just think that there's better places for it here. Living so close to the proposed location just makes me concerned for my health and safety, as I often have spent my own time cleaning up waste or garbage left in the park. I know that would increase with the pickleball being in the park. I know many of you don't know me, but I have a really serious chronic illness, and I have been on and off hospice and palliative care for the last five years. I feel that having a home that is accessible to my medical team, where I can easily access the hospital, and where there's limited noise is personally important to me. I know that doesn't really matter in the long run, but it's just how I feel about it. Being in a home that's footsteps from the park already impacts safety of those living in the area, but my primary concern is actually adding a sport that will mainly draw unknown adults to participate in this, in a child-centered space. I know others living around the park feel uneasy about this as well. And I just ask you to imagine on a weekly basis, like having strangers just randomly walk through your yard, and not to mention how pets in the area cope, because my pets are still struggling with the presence of a walking path, like right up against our yard. And I know that's something that has been greatly beneficial to the community, but just a point to make. I also was looking through our noise ordinances, and so I just wanted to reference chapter six thirty-four point oh one. That just talks about how people in the community have a right to not have a disturbance of the peace that would be detrimental to life, health, repose, peace, and safety of any individual. You can read the whole thing later if you would like to. And then chapter six thirty-four oh seven is that no person shall create an unnecessary access or offensive noise on any street, sidewalk, or property adjacent to a school, institution of learning, or church, or any hospital in the area, provided that signs are placed there saying that a hospital is located there. So I really think that this would go against those. I think that maybe somewhere like Merrimack would be a better option for this, or somewhere not so downtown located, in my personal opinion. And then there are countless articles from reputable sources, like Los Angeles Times and the Wall Street Journal, that record issues with noise in pickleball locations and areas of residential homes, schools, hospitals, and businesses. And I'm happy to provide those for you guys, if you would like them after the meeting, I have them here. There, I don't want a division in our community to be created over something like pickleball, as seen in these articles online that say, like, town warring over pickleball, town split in half over parks, pickleball court, because it just causes such a noise problem. I think what I was reading was the decibels for a pickleball court, if you live within, like, a certain vicinity. I'd have to pull it up to give the exact vicinity, but it's sixty-five decibels, and like a hairdryer is between sixty and ninety decibels, so it would be like a hairdryer, just like constantly being turned on in your house over and over again. So I just think that everyone in this community deserves the joy of, not only their sport for people with pickleball, to have a place where they feel they can enjoy their sport without being a nuisance, but also... but also we deserve the joy of a family-friendly park. And that's all I had to say about that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions? What was your name again?
Sierra Beerball.
Beerball?
Mm-hmm.
With a B?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
B-I-B-R-B-A-U-D.
I was gonna make sure I didn't pronounce it wrong because I'm terrible with names.
It's okay. It happens a lot.
So how long have you lived at your location there at?
I think six and a half years.
Six and a half years. And then was the path already there when you moved in?
No, sir.
They came in after that?
Yes.
Okay. I just kinda wondered that. You know, you bring up some good points. Couple of them I kinda question when you say that it's gonna be strangers that are gonna be coming in. When we had it here at the community center, it wasn't really strangers. It was the community, people in the community that came. I don't recall seeing-
Pickleball's often, like, becomes competitive, and that's what I have mostly seen is that people will travel around to different towns to compete with other groups.
I have heard there are tournaments, and I think that was something I brought up.
That was what I was more fearing, but also even if they're people that play in the community center, that doesn't necessarily mean we know that they should be in a, like, child-centered space either because they're working with other adults at that point. So I guess that's kind of my-
And then the other issue that you brought up that there would be drinking about, our parks are non-alcoholic, so I don't think that would be an issue.
It's a lot of people, like, throw them back before and party with their friends and then go play pickleball. And it's, I know that they are not allowed to do that in the park. I know that it doesn't stop people from doing that in the park, but I know that they're not allowed to. Yeah.
But again, I appreciate that you came and voiced your concerns, and I do agree that maybe another look at the location should be looked at, but, I mean, that'll have to be decided, but, Mr. Castle.
What was your address again?
One Hillcrest Drive.
It's-
So it's very hard to find, but if you go into the park and you just look back at the fence, it's the White House in the park.
It's right next door to Ms. Trainer, correct?
Right. The fence goes around, the walking path goes around your house, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you're on the backside?
I'm literally, like, right across the driveway from where the Trainer's home is. Yes.
I've doordashed you.
Oh, you've doordashed me? That's cool.
So I know exactly where you are.
Yeah.
And you are right up, you're right there. You, I could see how you would, where it's gonna go in, how that's gonna be pretty much right outside your window.
Correct.
So, and again, I appreciate that you came and-
Yeah. Again, I don't hate pickleball. I want to be very clear. I don't. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Rob Trainer. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Rob Trainer. Live at one sixty-four North Main Street. Husband is Shannon Trainer. Usually I just, you know, give her an earful, but today I'm gonna give it all to all of ya. Also, I live, this is about the pickleball court. I live next door to Sierra. So a lot of the concerns she has are the same concerns that I have. So I'm gonna focus on other ones a little bit that she didn't hit on. I'm gonna agree with everything that she had said, but I'm gonna say, taking out green space and a good number of old growth trees in a park and putting up an eight-foot-tall cyclone fence like the ones that are around our basketball courts takes a lot of the beauty away from our park and a lot of the reason that people go to that park. It's, when we have so much green space available, to take a space that's green with long trees that's already being used by people and deciding, no, we're gonna do something else with this, that to me doesn't make sense. We have property in this town where it's flat with good drainage and we can put up a pickleball court and leave this space where people enjoy it already. So that's the number one thing. The second thing is the noise. So the sound of a ball hitting the paddle, paddle hitting a ball, is sixty-five decibels at a thousand feet. That's one ball. One ball, a ping like that, so it's kind of like the sound of, let's say, a hairdryer against your head, that loud, okay? Or it's gonna be about the same as eight lanes of traffic. Now, that's sixty-five decibels is eight lanes of traffic on a highway, you know, a thousand feet away. About the sound. So now you're gonna be putting in three courts, three courts. That can update the, that can create the sound. If those balls hit at the same time, the noise can get up to eighty-five decibels. It's pretty common in most places that there's more than one pickleball court, and they've been able to record up to eighty-five decibels of noise. Mid-Ohio Raceway, which is not near, in a residential area, has a ninety-decibel limit on their sound, and they're only open one day a week and only in the summer. And here, we're looking at fourteen hours a day, seven days a week with this level of noise. It's, and it's not, it's, I have another point now. I just lost that point. So it's a constant noise that, this is what it was. When I was, worked for the press, I happened to go to a lot of planning and zoning meetings, and I remember when the midget racers would come into town. And they had a limit of decibels that they could reach. And not only that, because they were going to be put in a near residential area, they needed to put soundproofing up, and they could only do their racing on weekends. These were the, this was what city council and what this administrator, or this city decided was this was too noisy, and this was the way that we can accommodate them, and this is the way that we can all live together. But I, so far, I'm not hearing anything that's accommodating the noise that goes with three pickleball courts. And living that close to it, it sounds like it's gonna be god-awful to be this neighbor, their neighbor to the park anymore, which would really kind of be disappointing. Also, again, the hospital ordinance, just wanna bring that up. It's on the books. Having this kind of constant noise next to an hospital is against the laws of London. So that's all I'm gonna say. I know there's other people that wanna talk about pickleball, and thank you for you guys, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Maureen Trainer. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Maureen Trainer. I currently live at six one three five Golden Strand Court in Hilliard, but as soon as I can't afford my rent, I'll be back in London. But I do work in London, and I've lived in London my whole life, so I still feel like I can share. This is also about pickleball. Surprise. So my, I agree with what the previous people have said about pickleball, especially because I also live right there, next to the park. But aside, I'm gonna try to think of other points. So first of all, I think if you were to build a court right there, it's pretty disconnected from any other of the sport facilities that we have. We have the basketball courts, we have the skate park, we have the baseball diamond, we have the pool. They're all on the other side. If you build a half a mile away another court, that, to me, it just, it seems a bit disconnected. Like, either build it next to all the other sporting facilities or create a new sporting facility. Merrimack Park has tons of space. My point, like, my point is, is that, like, at that point, that was the basketball court, but what was the original reason for moving the basketball court to where they are now? And then why was it a good idea to move the basketball court from the park to their current location? And then why aren't those criteria applied to this court? My second point is that it would be an eyesore. It would take up the entire side of the park, being greeted with a big wall fence leaving the bathrooms from the park. And it would require removing or relocating trees that have either been there for years or recently been planted there during the revitalization and reconstruction of the park. So also, I don't know the demand of pickleball because, to be honest, I had no idea what the sport was. I had to look it up. It's not my generation of sport, so I guess. And what is the average age range of pickleballers? Because, like previously mentioned, I believe that the park is pretty children-centric, child-centric, and I don't know any minor league pickleball teams. Despite that, if there's a high demand, again, where are they gonna park? On the street, the park parking lot that fills up in a sneeze, or the hospital parking lot, or the pool parking lot? And then, again, making them walk a half a mile away to get to the place where they're going instead of just building it. If they're parking at the pool, have it at the pool, like, by the baseball diamonds. And again, with the accessibility, like, we know that the park was built with accessibility in mind. But I also are not sure of the, how the courts will be accessible to the public. Like, if it's open year-round to the public, what is the plan to keep, you know, the nets in good condition, in good condition, those courts in good condition? Like, I remember when the tennis courts were around, and although that, there were many issues with the tennis courts, one of them was that the nets were in poor condition. And then once the nets are in poor condition, players don't wanna play, and if the nets don't get repaired or replaced, the court becomes abandoned. And then that's how you get the ancient tennis courts from where it looked like an earthquake hit them, but only right there. But if there's no public access, if the public doesn't have access to the court year-round, then why build it in a high-traffic area meant for the public? And then if there's limited access to the courts, then why build it in a high-traffic area that's meant for the public year-round? Why not build it in a place where the public is to seek it out when the sport is in season, possibly next to other courts or facilities that operate in the same way? Again, the pool only opens for certain times of the year, and then places like the basketball court and the baseball diamond, although they are technically open year-round, they are mainly utilized during their respective seasons. Lastly, there are other uses for that area. Like firstly, the city currently uses that spot to show their free movies to the public. And although that's not a huge issue to force them to move locations despite, or move locations to show their movies, they've done that before, that area is a, you know, prime, prime central spot, public area, and it's large, flat, access to electricity, and access to bathrooms. But you could also just repave and paint that spot. Like, have you ever driven by the elementary school during their recess? And if you haven't, I suggest you go drive by and observe just how many children are playing on the blacktop. The children could, the city could repave the plot and paint directly on it for additional activities for kids of all ages to play. You can have four-square hopscotch. You can paint the map of the U.S. or paint a mini racetrack around the perimeter of the plot. So although this might be a controversial take, I believe that the Cowling Park is mainly used and utilized by families and children. Like, unless there is a minor league pickleball team in town pushing for this court to be built in that exact spot that I am unaware of, I think that the court should be considered in a different location. That's all I got. Questions?
Josh?
Yeah, Rec.
I'd like to give her some of the answers. Average age, when we had a facility to host pickleball, I think the average age would probably be between fifty-five and sixty-five years old. The reason that the, this location was chosen over others is numerous. One being bathroom facilities would be available to the players. Other locations, there are no restrooms available.
Can I interrupt?
We could put in court of Johns.
Can I interrupt that point? But the bathrooms are only open, what, June through August? They're closed in the winter and the summer.
Well, you don't play pickleball in the winter.
But I thought it was a year-round sport.
You don't play?
So if it's not a year-round sport, then why put it in a public place that's there for year-round use?
Because of the facilities that are available. Security cameras are available to monitor the location for the safety of it.
But the security cameras don't reach that far. They only monitor the shelter.
We can see that location with our security cameras. So anyway, there's reasons why those areas was chosen. Mainly the restroom facilities available for people that go to play. Typically, older people, they like to have restrooms close by. Security reasons. And I've heard it mentioned several times about ripping out trees. Landon, is that in your scope? There's no trees scheduled to be removed from the park.
Well, then that spot just isn't big enough for three courts without ripping out a tree or two.
According to the person that came and gave us the quote. Yeah, so I just wanna make sure everybody understands.
Leaves in your pickleball field.
Sorry?
Then you'll have leaves in your pickleball field, and then-
Well, I mean, you'll still have an eight-foot fence.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to, and another thing, if you wanna kick it back to service, I guess you can. I would suggest that you go to Grove City. We'll reach out, maybe you can, Michael, to their Parks and Rec. They have six courts located in a residential area. Homes are within a hundred and twenty-five feet, both sides, so we could ask them about problems with noise and so forth. I would think they would know more than anybody. The hospital, I believe, is seven hundred feet away from the farthest, or the closest edge of the pickleball courts.
Can I ask also about the sound decimals? Is that if you are in your house, that's what it sounds like in your house?
Yeah.
Not as if you're standing outside?
Send them, like, I invited my daughter to that, so.
Oh, okay. I just, because I wanted to ask you, but I forgot, and so we brought it back up. So if you're in your house and they're playing pickleball, and the sound of that pickleball sounds like a hairdryer?
I mean, I can tell you that there is, there is a kid that goes to the park pretty much every other day, and he swings on the swings.
For hours.
For hours. And you can hear, like, you need some WD-40, but you can hear that swing squeak and squeak and squeak. I'm like, I'm upstairs in the farthest back part of the house, and you can just hear him swinging away for the last four hours, and he's still going.
Wow. Wow, that's amazing to-
And that's just one kid on one swing. Any other questions?
What's, I know you looked at other sites, but what was the cost difference between putting it where you're suggesting and other sites, like, off of Walnut?
Well, the biggest, can I answer that since I was there? So the biggest, the biggest cost was the bathrooms. Wherever, if we move it to any other location, there's gonna be a cost for bathrooms.
Right, where the work, like, uses bathrooms.
Right where they were, where?
In the community center, moving right there is parking right there. The bathrooms are here, it's public.
That's for-
You mean next door where the building's no longer there?
You mean over in the field, the field next door?
Correct. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, you've got public bathrooms. You've got, you've got space right there that's-
Well, that wasn't one of the locations considered, but I, you know, I suppose you could.
The only reason that wasn't considered is that it was a future site of our police department. If things go, we get our five million dollars from the federal government and so forth, so.
You could switch it with the dog park. No one goes there. And it has water.
There's no bathrooms.
You could put the dog park in the Cowling Park. That would be a little bit better centralized location.
Probably kinda is. There's dogs in Cowling Park now.
Yeah, but you would want a fenced-off, you know, fenced-off location for the dogs. And then you can, you know, put the dog park, you put the court where the dog park is, you know, ask the school to remain open, put it, make it a-
So just to circle back to your question, the big, the big reason we stayed where the original plan was, was there's electric there already, and you mentioned the cameras. You know, it's gonna be easier to feed, if we do need to put another camera in, we can face it towards the court. The electric was there, the bathrooms were there. There were too many things that were already there that made it the opportune spot. You know, and we're talking cost. You wanna keep that cost down because, you know, that's the next revel raising, is you're spending way too much money on this. So that was taken into consideration, too. But, you know, it doesn't need discussed more? Maybe so.
I mean-
You've brought up some very good points, and I can't argue with you on anything that you brought. I really can't. I understand it, especially the noise. That's amazing to me. I wouldn't want that.
But, I mean, the other thing is I heard that they need, like, ample draining. And I just know that, you know, previous experience is just like, the park turns into a lake, basically, when it rains excessively. Especially, like, our yard, we call it, you know, Lake Trainer, and then the park has a lake, and then it's not, even if you repave it and pave it, you know, with some clearance, you're still gonna get flooding, and all the, all the grass is just gonna be just, just a swamp. So if it's, if it is true that resources have said that it's, that, you know, pickleball fields or, you know, any field needs proper draining, then that's gonna be another cost, you know, to add proper drainage to that spot right there because it, that place floods. Or you could just paint it and let kids play.
Well, again, I appreciate that you, all of you came in, thank you.
And, thanks.
Thank you. David Mars, you can state your name and address for the record, please.
David Mars, one fifty-five North Oak Street. Excuse me, I actually came to speak on a few, a few, two issues tonight, um, that are on the agenda. One of them is the pickleball, just, I was going to do that second, but I'll just address it first since it's, seems to be what has been the topic of conversation. Actually, my conference, we're not going to be focused on this, but I thought, um, Mr. Norman made an interesting comment of, I wouldn't want that next to my house. Um, and I think that needs to be a standard that each of you consider as you consider what, where the placement of this. Um, and it seems like the proposal now is only one location, but I don't understand exactly. I understand that there's pros and cons to different locations. Um, my intention was to, to advocate for placing at Merrimack Park. Obviously, I have a stake in that and that I put a lot of work into Merrimack Park. Um, one of the reasons that I worked so hard for Merrimack and why Merrimack means a lot to me is equity. Um, I feel like, to me, um, there's been a lot of energy put in a lot of different parts of the city. Um, Cowling for one, you know, I love Cowling, it's an amazing park, I love taking my kids there. Um, it gets a lot of use from different parts of the city. So, um, you know, I only live a block from Merri, from Cowling, um, and so I go there frequently. But I'll see people coming from all over, all parts of the city. I see people coming in there from outside of the city. Um, that's not the case so much for Merrimack. For Merrimack, we get a very regional, uh, or zone or, um, ward usage of it, where generally if you sit at Merrimack and watch the people coming, you'll see that a lot of our users of Merrimack are walking there. We do get people driving in, but, um, as far as what I can tell is we get a lot of users for Merrimack just from that community, or from that part of the community. Um, and what I would love to see would be that Merrimack becomes more of a draw, and we get people coming there from all parts of the city so that all people are using that resource, so it is a city resource, it's not a Ward Three resource. That's a, as we grow it and we develop the fields there, um, I'm so excited that we have, um, the softball happening there again. Um, that's going to draw people. Um, when I heard that pickleball was a possibility, I was super excited because, you know, I, I really couldn't care less about pickleball. I think it's a fad. But, um, it, I saw the, the data on the kinds of people that it draws, and I think it's a great resource to bring people to our city to be using those resources. I think we would get people from, um, you know, one of the things I, I wish we did more was with attracting people that live up at Chalktaw into, um, and using the resources that are here in London. Um, I kind of, I hate hearing people say, uh, lake people because they have a London address. And it's, you know, I, I, I just think that London is, isn't just, there, there are these little divisions of London. There's the South Side, or Tolland, or Dog Hill, all these different names we call it, Ward Three. Um, but to me, equity means that we are sharing these same resources. And, um, when I look at Cowling, I see, I see that happening in, in a situation where Cowling is, but I don't see it happening quite yet where Merrimack is. And I, I love that part of town, and I want that part of town to get the same kind of respect, the same kind of resources. Um, and I hear the, the same, you know, we look at the, um, resources that are available to us, and obviously, we don't have bathrooms out there. We do have cam- cameras out at Merrimack, um, but they're just at the front part of it. We don't have the electric running, or, there is electric out towards the back, but, um, we don't have the cameras back there yet. Um, we do need to get, um, bathrooms back there. We've already got softball happening, so we need bathrooms there now. Um, so we may not have them, but we certainly need them. Um, and I would call it a need because as we continue to grow that, we're going to need bathrooms at Merrimack, just like we need bathrooms elsewhere. And so to, to make a decision based on whether there's bathrooms available now, I think is short sighted because very, we already need the bathrooms now. If we don't have them, we, we should build that into whatever plan there is so that we do have the bathrooms. And I would fully support the Merrimack miracle, you know, working towards helping with the bathrooms, because that's a need, not a want, that we have out at that Merrimack, um, facility. Um, and so that's, that's sort of my thought too, why we would do that. But again, circling back to, to Mr. Norman's comment, I think that does need to be a standard that we all, or that you all consider, is, you know, um, what that would be like to live next to, and whether you would want that for yourself. Um, I can certainly see the passion that they've put into their argument tonight. And, you know, if I was sitting up there, I'd be thinking, you know, whether or not, it's not a ma- matter of whether you're not, whether or not you like the trainers, or, you know what I mean, it's, it's a matter, or, or any of that. It's, you know, as community, the guardians of our community, if you will, um, you know, that could be pretty detrimental, and I could see where that would be, um, you know, something that I don't think anybody sitting here was like, yes, please put that by my house. Um, and I think that's something to strongly consider. Um, so again, appreciate all of you. The other thing I wanted to speak on tonight, and this is super fast, I just, this is a big thank you. Um, you'll be seeing, um, legislation tonight about moving the state routes around, so that we, um, we change the state route that, that runs currently through our, through Main Street, um, and so that it would route it to run out to thirty-eight. And I just am so appreciative of all the people, Rex, Bill, um, and anybody else that has worked to make that happen. Um, that is going to make our downtown so much safer and so much more appealing and walkable. And, um, I cannot wait to see that happen. I'm so thrilled that that's the case, because I, as I understood, it used to be either impossible, it would take forever. It seems like, um, that legislation will help to make that happen. I'll use eminently, uh, just much faster than I think anybody anticipated. So appreciate everyone that has put work into that particular legislation. That's like awesome. Well, I, as I understood, I, well, no, we... Exactly, that's what I'm saying, we, it's been, it's been, it's been going for so long. And to actually know that it, it could be happening, you know, yes, I'm, that's, I'm right with you, Rex. I want, I've got all my toes crossed too, um, I'm, I'm so excited to have that happen, um, because I didn't actually believe we would see it. So, I'm thrilled to see that particular legislation go through. And again, I, I apologize, we won't be able to stay for the whole meeting tonight, we got to get back to the eighteen-eleven event downtown tonight. But, um, but appreciate all of your work as counselors.
I agree, I believe it's a fad also, and I'd like to see maybe an ice skating rink at one of the parks.
I would love that too.
It's not a fad.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, that's, that's a good thing.
Mr. President? So you said you're going to leave, and others may leave too, once we get out of this part of this. I want to address a couple of things here. I've been an advocate for this for a couple of years, because we just had that dead space. I thought that would be a great place for it. Exactly where they're looking at, that's what I thought. And, and, uh, you know, I've heard everybody's opinions, and I understand there's things I did not consider before. Uh, I'm still an advocate for it, even though it might be a bit of a fad. It's also not just fifty-five year olds, they actually have professionals that play this now. And it's down to your age group, your age group, young lady, that they play this. No, no, they actually have professionals, they have, it's on TV. You, you can find it, anyway, anyway. Um, so I'm, I'm still hoping that we can have pickleball courts somewhere. I just think that it, it, it's an addition to what we have in this community that we don't currently have. The bathrooms, uh, yesterday, drove by Burliner Park. Haven't been by there for a while, um, but paid attention. You know, they've got thirty fields there or something like that, I don't know, maybe Landon knows how many fields they have there. But they have porta potties. And I know bathrooms are better, but they're expensive. And if we at least had porta potties in, at Merrimack Park for the softball players, for the kids at the bathroom, because who really wants a five-year-old to go pee on a flagpole because there's no bathroom around there? I mean, there's, there's ways that we could probably put the porta potties in that I think would be a good resource and a good, an appropriate use of money from the parks to do that, to make it a more comfortable environment for a lot of people. So I just wanted to address those points.
Yeah, no, I agree completely on the porta johns, even if that was a, whether a short term or a long term solution. And I think Burliner is a great example. I actually drive past that every day, I'm doing a project down in German Village right now, and, and I marvel at how, how much use Burliner gets to this day. Um, and the economic impact that has on Columbus, it can't, is, has to be significant. Um, and I think that's what we want too for London, so. But the bathrooms, I mean, I think it's a pretty quick solution to stick a, some nice porta johns out there.
Yep.
Do they have some good ones anymore? The whole trailers where you can get electric and water running to them, and they flush toilet and everything, right?
They even smell good.
That's, that's a plus right there. You don't have to hold your breath.
All right, thank you, David. All right, up next, uh, committee reports. Greg?
So the Personnel, Budget and Finance Committee met on March eleventh. We've got a number of things coming before us tonight. Just so, hey, we'll put this out publicly. Um, the revenue through February, or through March, I'm sorry, through February, total was, uh, three million, three hundred, almost four hundred thousand dollars was the revenue for the year. Expenses were two point four million dollars for the year, so we're doing okay there overall. Um, there's going to be a number of items tonight, pickleball was one that's going to come up, streets, roadwork. Um, there's going to be some other items to come before us tonight. I did want to address one part of this that, there won't be any legislation tonight. But I was concerned, and I just want everybody here to know that we had, I had the concern, and we discussed, whether or not the sanitation department can continue to run, and can we afford to have the sanitation department? It's going to become a city service, not the Board of Public Utilities. If that goes away, it would then be a city-run, uh, department, and it has some challenges. Billing for that is a challenge. So it was presented, because I asked for some information, it was presented that, um, Mid-Ohio is willing to, um, bill for that and for our storm sewers. There is a cost involved. But currently, our sanitation department has to put in seventy thousand dollars, well, up till this point, each year to help with the billing and to run the office. So they're going to save the seventy thousand dollars. Um, but they, they have a razor thin margin. They break even, or just a little bit more right now. I just wanted to make sure that our sanitation department wasn't going to cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, and us not be able to afford it because of everything else. So I was assured by the auditor, who, who ran the numbers and said, you know, they're about fifteen thousand dollars short. But when you take the seventy thousand dollars that they were paying, taking out of their funds, and then we do pay Mid-Ohio a fee to, to bill for that for us, they're still going to be, you know, maybe thirty thousand dollars to the good for the year. And that's not very much, that's razor thin, right? But at least we're not going to go into the red just to have a sanitation department at this point. So I wanted to share that with everyone as part of that report. So otherwise, everything else will come before council tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Brent?
Yeah, the public safety, uh, Chief Eads was there, uh, Chief Nichols couldn't make it, but Sergeant Cooper filled in. And I have his report. They hired Xavier Mandell, or I'm sorry, Manville, and he started the Basic Peace Officer Academy that week. They still have two open positions and are accepting applications for officers. All the cruisers that City Council approved have been outfitted and are in service. And they hosted a CPT training class for all countywide law enforcement departments with the Madison County Prosecutor's Office. They have been utilizing the Madison County Sheriff's Office to dispatch when they have no available dispatcher over, to cover the shift. And some noticeable incidents in conjunction with the Madison County Sheriff's Office, Ohio Attorney General's Office, Organized Crime Investigation Commission, and Ohio High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Task Force. A, a local London area drug supplier arrested last year, was recently convicted. After the lengthy investigation, Randall Mock was convicted of aggravated possession of drugs, which is a first degree felony. Mock was sentenced March eleventh by Madison County Common Pleas Court. And he got a prison sentence of nine to thirteen and a half years. And he looks like he resided in Chandler Avenue. And Chandler Avenue should be drug-free now. That's all I got.
Rich?
Okay, I'll give the minutes from the, uh, Safety Service Committee meeting was held on, uh, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. All committee members were present. Uh, minutes of the December twelfth and the February thirteenth meeting were approved as written. Uh, there was no meeting in January, so we have no minutes for that. My colleague, Mr. McDaniel, gave the Police Division report. Uh, we received a report from the Fire and EMS Department from Chief Eads. Uh, my other colleague, Mr. Stahl, will give that report to council. Uh, there are free smoke detectors that are available through the Red Cross, through the Fire Department. Now I want to get some clarification on this, but the Fire Department has to install them. But now I heard that the Red Cross people can install them also, is that correct?
Heard, I heard what you heard was the Fire Department had to install. I've not heard about the Red Cross. I, I think that the gist of the fact is, they want to make sure that they actually put in use and not somebody take them in. Either not use them at all or sell them, they want to make sure they're put in use.
Okay, good enough for me. Alrighty, under new business, uh, Mr. Castle stated that, uh, legislation needs to come to council to assess property taxes at one thirty-eight Mound Street to reclaim the city's funds, uh, that were used to clean and clear this property after, after a catastrophic fire. Um, that legislation we thought would be here tonight, I don't see it. So Mr. Stahl will be sponsoring it when it does come forth. Uh, it will probably be coming to you as emergency legislation, as we need to get that taken care of as soon as possible, so we can, and get our funds back. Uh, under old business, uh, we had a redrawing of the ward boundaries. Nothing is final. Council members are encouraged to look at it, support any changes. Uh, there was talk of possibly having a workshop in the future for council and citizens. But nothing will happen until after the presidential elections in November. So it would be first of the year, before we could even start talking about it. Next Safety Service Committee meeting will take place on April the ninth at six P.M. Uh, be right next door here in the conference room. And we adjourned at six thirty-four.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend the Finance or, um, Service Committee meeting. Um, but the next Service Committee meeting will be April ninth at five o'clock in the meeting room next door, right before the Safety Committee meeting.
And to add to that, the, um, Finance, I forgot to say this, the Finance Committee, uh, because April eighth would be our day, and that's the day of the eclipse, we've moved that back to April fifteenth. Put that on your calendar, Councilman Hitt, we need you there.
I already got it on there.
Okay.
All right, Shannon?
Let's see, I'm just seeing if there's anything I need to touch on that, um, Greg didn't mention that occurred at the last Finance Committee. Um, let's see, that looks like there was, um, I believe the city's got some, a demo with ADP for some HR services, um, that would greatly increase, um, Ken, Ken had mentioned that, um, employee hire paperwork, um, licensure expiration reminders regarding tasks and things like that. Um, citywide, uh, there's basically a platform that they're seeking to provide these HR services to city employees. Um, annual cost will be less, just over six thousand dollars a year. Um, I think this was a, uh, the auditor's office keeping everybody in, there's no, um, acquisition or funding requests necessary because of the low, low dollar amount. Um, let's see, we did have a need, um, uh, an imminent need to comply with our, um, responsibilities under the Mid-Ohio contract, so there's legislation pending tonight, basically to allocate those funds so that Mid-Ohio can actually start taking over the responsibilities for debt service bill payment as they've already started with the, um, collection of the revenues. Let's see, there was a, um, I didn't hear about, there was a storage building at Merrimack that, um, we need to have, uh, funding. I believe that's coming up for, on the agenda later on. And then, um, we did talk about, um, a little bit more about the comprehensive... And then, we did talk about, a little bit more about the comprehensive plan, and I think at this point, that's, we're still at the sort of planning stages requesting, getting, preparing to get an RFQ, I think, or X, is that what it's called? Okay. Next meeting, April 15th.
All right, thank you. John?
I have the City of London Division of Fire EMS reports, safety for a month of March. Department EMS Training, Department College of Ohio Health, Department EMS Training canceled for Madison Health. Fire Training, Pre-Planning and Hose Movement on Sovereign Village. Department of Fire Training and Pre-Plan Walmart and TSC. Hosted several students for ride time patrols and grant paramedic class. Began process replacing EMS billing. Began installing free smoke detectors provided by the American Red Cross. Began installation of exhaust removal system. Repaired flagpoles for London Cracker and London City Schools. Implemented new altering system and began the build of the system. Had five hundred twenty-nine total runs, seven hundred and seventy EMS, twenty, two hundred and thirty-nine fire. That's all I have, thank you.
Michael?
Public Service Committee, we had it on March 12th. Councilman McDaniel's and I were there. Councilman Hitt was not there. We approved the minutes from February. We had a department heads, some things. First of all, I'd just like to say this before I give the Street Department report, that I'd like to request that, and I'm a Facebook warrior and everyone knows it, but before we post on Facebook about our Street Department people, we're real quick to say, hey, they're not doing this, they're not doing that. Well, when they are out there and they are doing something and you ridicule them and call them names, that's probably not good for their morale. And I would request that we act like we're adults a little bit, and, you know, I think sometimes we forget that, you know, when they're, when they're in those, in those sewer drains, clearing those out, you know, that's something we don't think about. We just expect them to be done, but that's a job that has to be done. And I felt really kind of ashamed when that was brought up at the meeting, that there were people out there calling our street workers stooges because they're doing what they're supposed to do. So I just want to say that before I go into his report, but, Street Department does quite a bit. There were water line repairs done, sewer line repairs done. They were filling potholes on any of the days that they could get out there and do it. They placed some new signs up around town. When it did snow, we haven't had a lot, but they've been out there, they were out quick and got it salted and got it plowed as quickly as they could. They've done some, some things here at the City Hall. Let's see, there was a water main break on North Main Street that they worked on. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, they're working on the water main on Main Street, sorry, I misread that. The water main break was over on Cherry Street. The Christmas lights came down at the park, that, Street Department did that. They were out knocking down weeds. They were out cleaning up the parking lot and the BMX track out at the Merrimack Park. It's, you know, that's just page one. There's three pages of things that our Street Department, you know, does. So, you know, they're, they're not just twiddling their thumbs, and we need to give them a little bit of respect, in my opinion. Moving on to the parks and wrecks. Swimming pool, we're looking for lifeguards, need about seven to 10, was reported. We're also looking for front desk and concessions. The spring volleyball just got underway. Games will start yesterday. Games have started yesterday, sorry. There'll be tournaments the week of April 22nd. Looks like there's about 116 people signed up. That's up to from last year. Adult softball is going to be starting. It'll start in May, it'll happen in May and June for the spring session, and July and August for the summer. There'll be a coed league on Mondays, men's league on Thursdays. The Merrimack Park, we know there was a fire out there. The finances approved the money from the insurance so that we can get a new building built out there. It's going to be a bigger, better building. We'll be able to keep our park equipment at the park instead of spread around throughout the city. We did discuss the pickleball courts, I'm not going down that rabbit hole again, we'll be talking about that later. We also discussed the parking again downtown. It's an ongoing discussion, there was no resolution on that. What else did we go over? We did discuss the ward boundaries, it was suggested that we have a work session for that in the future. We are going to have a recap, sort of a town hall meeting recap with some of the organizers. The festival's downtown, just to kind of, the things that were brought up during the town meeting, we're kind of re-meeting with the organizers to, you know, try to negotiate and get some settlement there. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Onto City official reports, Rex?
Just want to comment on the comprehensive plan. Law Director informed me that I do not need council to make legislation to put that out. So comprehensive plan bid is going to be going out, hopefully second, I think April 9th is when we're planning on reviewing all the submittals and try to make a determination of what engineering firm that we would use for that, and get a cost, and then we'll come back to council for approval on getting a plan.
Does that mean you've already issued a request for qualifications?
We're putting the ad out. We missed the deadline this week unfortunately, so it won't be till next weekend, but...
And you're going to put that ad out where?
I'm going to put it in, in the Madison Messenger, by law, we have to put it in, in a publication, and then I'm going to reach out manually to engineering firms that does that and just let them know that we have our, you know, we've got a request out for bids. And I'm going to see if I can just trade magazine, I can try to put it in.
So I was, I was going to bring this up later, but since you just brought it up, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission had like an annual meeting just a few weeks ago. I don't know if you attended, but I went, I looked through their, their handouts, and they now have, and I know you've mentioned it, but they now have, I think, additional resources for type of planning, and it was on one of their handouts, and they might give you, be able to give you a list of agencies that do this, or companies that do this.
Yeah, I've already done that with them. I had reached out to them, actually, they have an intern program that we researched, we first thought about trying to get an intern to come in and assist in doing that, but it didn't, all the things that we, hoops that we had to jump through and everything didn't sound like it was going to be a real easy task to perform. So we decided to go with, try to get a professional firm to do that for us, but we got some contacts from them whenever I reached out to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Onto old business for a third reading, Resolution 105-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 105-24, sponsored by Shannon Traynor. A resolution authorizing the order to increase appropriations and transfer funds.
Ms. Traynor, would you like to comment since you're the, since you're the sponsor?
Like, why isn't anybody talking?
I thought you were looking, trying to find it.
This was a request from the Street Department to address some long overdue maintenance on city streets. It's for a ton of money because it's been that long since there have been the said repairs made, so issue's not going to get any better without it.
We, we did ask initially, when this was brought up at Finance, how they were going to determine which streets were going to be looked at or would be on the list. At that point, we were told that there would be some type of a rating or review, and then at the last Finance meeting, Mr. Castle stated that there was another solution to that. Can you give us an update, please?
We contracted this week with a firm to professionally record and grade our city streets for us. It'll come back with them, I think, a mapping of all the city streets for us, which will be nice and handy. So we contracted with them, hopefully get that started as soon as possible.
Okay.
I don't know the exact timeframe though.
Okay. So do you have a suggestion? I mean, at this point, I'm telling, I'll say that, I understand that you, you brought this up and you can address the fact that, you know, things need to go out so that things are bid on because, you know, the, the people that supply the materials and, and maybe do the work, they're going to get, they're going to get booked up, we're not going to have an opportunity even if we want to, if we wait too much longer. However, I personally would like to know what our plan is before I say we move with this, but I would like you to address that, please.
My conversation with Bill is, we're probably at the drop-dead date to try to get them. We probably, we will probably, if we even know the streets that we need to have done, we probably won't be able to get them done this year. He says that they have filled up that fast already. So, you know, we'll, we'll have this done, we'll have a deer mark, we'll have all the streets made. I'm not sure what the legislation does, I think you're moving that into capital. I think I've, I'm pretty sure I've asked Finance several years in a row that we should be putting money in capital for such projects. I would still like to see this done, so it's put in capital, so we've got it there, so that we can act on this and get things scheduled and get things moving. Probably, full-depth repairs is probably not what we're going to be able to get done, right? We could probably do some microsealing. No. Stand corrected.
I couldn't hear that.
He said, at this point, he doesn't think we'll be able to get anything for this year, so...
So if we move it to capital, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Sorry. So if we move it to capital, and nothing happens this year, it stays there, carries over to next year, so next year...
Yes, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that...
Absolutely.
So it takes, it takes that money out of play and it puts it in a spot?
It puts it in the capital fund, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? What are council's wishes?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We already did. We just did.
Oh, sorry.
Onto Resolution 106-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Make motion.
Second.
Resolution 106-24, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So this is related to software for the tax department to allow residents to complete their taxes, city taxes, online, which is just a more efficient way of filing those and a less costly.
Move to adopt?
A second.
Who's second?
Everybody's second.
Okay.
Just put them all.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
No.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 106-24 is passed. Onto Resolution 108-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Make a motion.
Second.
Resolution 108-24, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So this is to replace an unmarked vehicle generally used for, by the detective and for other purposes. We are generally on a rotation to replace vehicles, this, because it doesn't have to be outfitted, is considerably cheaper than what we've looked at for other vehicles, and I, I understand this is starting to get up in mileage a little bit, and they just want to stay on the rotation. Make a motion to adopt?
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
No.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Resolution 108-24 is passed. Onto second reading, Resolution 110-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Motion.
Second.
Resolution 110-24, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Okay, this is just the, our annual report for the TIF agreement, CRAs and TIF agreements throughout the city, just making sure they're up to date and following those guidelines. I stated at the last meeting, this is supposed to be in by March 31st, 2024, to the state.
Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
No.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Sir, just, just a quick, a quick minute before we do that. I did have a citizen reach out and question why this had to be an emergency. I kind of tried to explain to her that, you know, we, we have the information, we were able to see it, but it's not our timeline that we went by, and that we would have to do this in order to get it in on time. I just want to address that for anybody that's listening now.
Rich put in a motion.
Second.
Who's second? Was that Norman?
Yes.
Sorry. All right, you're fine. Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 110-24 is passed. Onto Resolution 113-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Motion.
Second.
Resolution 113-24, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2024.
Yeah, this is just the, to get on the ODOT's road salt contract, this is something we have to do so that we get a good price on the salt.
And we haven't, we haven't had any questions on it or anything?
Yes, Rex?
Yeah, I recommend to leave it on. That has not been released by the state yet, so I can't see their sample legislation to make sure that this is correct. So just leave it on. We get it passed next time, it'll be fine.
Okay, onto Resolution 114-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved. Second.
Resolution 114-24, sponsored by Brett McDaniel, a resolution assessing the cost of the removal of high grass and weeds.
Yes, this is so the city can get paid via the property tax for habitual offenders, not cutting the grass. That's pretty much it.
So it reimburses us for work that's already done?
Yes.
Okay. So has there been any questions from citizens about this one either? Anybody? No one? Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
A second. A second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
This is to suspend. It's still, it's not, it's not an emergency.
No.
Councilman Hayes?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
What are council's wishes?
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Was that Councilman Norman?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Okay, resolution one fourteen dash twenty four is passed. Onto ordinance one fifteen dash twenty four. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one, one fifteen dash twenty four, sponsored by Rich Hayes, an ordinance amending section fourteen sixty four of the codified ordinances.
Yes, this says, uh, we wanna move this to, uh, twenty one days, uh, since we have no daily newspaper anymore and the messenger requires a five day lead time to get something published. Uh, this ordinance just amends notice of time to twenty one days.
What's the notice time right now?
Ten.
Ten, I think it is, yeah. I believe we can leave this on.
Okay. Onto ordinance one sixteen dash twenty four. Can I get a motion to read by title and number, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one sixteen dash twenty four, sponsored by Rich Hayes, an ordinance amending section twelve forty four of the codified ordinances.
Uh, this is basically the same thing as, uh, ordinance one fifteen twenty four. Uh, this is appeals, uh, going to the Board of Zoning. Just amends the time to twenty one days. And I believe it's ten days on that now.
This one was twenty.
This one was twenty.
This is twenty, okay.
Such an appeal shall be taken within twenty one days after the decision of zoning administrator by filing a notice to appeal that specifies the ground upon which the appeal is being taken. So, how often does this group meet? The Board of Zoning Appeals, correct?
Yeah, once a month.
They meet once a month? I mean, it's kind of a short time, honestly. When you think about, if it does make the paper or if it's published and someone's only gonna have, they're gonna have to do it. Do they have to notify within twenty one days prior to? So, if we have a meeting today and we approve something today, they're only gonna have twenty one days. And where does that fall in the calendar? I mean, per month. When do they normally meet?
It, it has to be, it has to, appeal be, has to be twenty one days prior to the meeting, is what this is referencing.
After a decision was made?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they have twenty one days prior to the meeting. They've got so many days afterwards to appeal, but they have to do it twenty one days prior to the meeting because that has, that notice has to be put in the paper that they're gonna hear that appeal. So, that's what the reference is, prior to the meeting. Those were all the, uh, yeah, the forty five days is still intact.
Forty five days?
To make an appeal.
To make an appeal.
Yeah, and then that, that, I don't know how it fits out on the calendar, but it has to be filed to have it to, on a hearing for twenty one days prior to that hearing. So that it can be put in the paper by the time you have your hearing, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the, the timeline's just confusing because, uh, they could have a meeting and, so we could have a meeting the first of the month, but those minutes won't be probably published until the, after the next meeting when they're approved, right? And so, now you're already thirty days into forty five days and how do you get a twenty one day time to appeal? So, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how this works.
You're not getting a twenty one day to appeal. You got forty five days to appeal.
Okay, okay, but you have to give, you have to give notice within twenty one days.
But you have to, you have to let them know at least twenty one days prior to the meeting that you're gonna appeal. So, you can't, I guess you can't wait the whole forty five days 'cause then you'd probably miss the twenty one day notice.
Well, we'll just go to the next.
Yeah, they can, they, they can appeal in forty five days and if they don't make the twenty one day to make next month's meeting, then it won't be here on the schedule till the following month. Is what they're saying. They need twenty one days to publish in a paper and notify residents of the hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. It, I understand where, you were confusing with the forty five days and the twenty ones, but like Josh said, if you miss that twenty one day threshold, it'll just be heard the following month.
Well, but, but, but also, I mean, if they've been approved to do something.
You wouldn't appeal on approval.
No.
The applicant, it's for denial that they're gonna appeal. An applicant's gonna deny a, a, uh, I, well, I guess you could, if somebody was there against it, I guess they could appeal it.
That's what I'm saying. If, if, if they approve you to build a garage too close to the property line, for example, and, you've been approved, but I am against it because it blocks my, my.
That, that has happened.
Sunbathing.
Right. Well, it, it could, it could be whatever.
It got to be quite a mess 'cause the guy got postponed on getting stuff done most of the summer, that he was wanting to get work done in his yard, so.
I just wanna make sure that both, that any, anybody that has an, an interest in this has enough time in that, you know, once a meeting happens and those minutes aren't generally published until after the next meeting when they're approved.
You would typically be at the meeting. The person that appealed this was actually at the meeting.
Greg, it's actually increasing the time, too. It was twenty days and now it's increasing to twenty one days.
So, we're just, we're adding one more day to it.
Yeah.
Is that enough?
We're giving them more time, Greg.
It, it, it's not about, it's not about the, the, that twenty one days. It's about when, where maybe a neighbor finds out about it and can read what happened. Because they may be upset with their neighbor who's building the garage. They're not gonna go talk to them. They may wanna read and what happened and then you're, I'm, I'm just questioning the process because I don't understand it, so, okay.
It's not a fun process when you get in dispute, I will say that.
Leave it on for next week.
Yeah, there's no hurry.
Okay. Ordinance one seventeen dash twenty four. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one seventeen dash twenty four, sponsored by Rich Hayes, an ordinance amending section twelve forty two of the codified ordinances.
Uh, this is so, uh, the city of London lines up with other towns within the county on our fees such as zoning permits, uh, amendments, appeals, variances, uh, conditional use permits, plan approvals, other procedures. It just puts us in line with everybody else. We're not under, we're not over.
So, if, um, so we're doing this so that we're in line, so if one of the other surrounding changes there's, are we, are we, is this gonna be like a,
It'll have to come back to council, yeah.
Domino effect and we'll have to come back? Okay, so we're, okay, okay.
Anything else on this one? Okay. Onto new business. Resolution one eighteen dash twenty four. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one eighteen dash twenty four, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Well, people like to donate to our police department, so they have ten thousand, over ten thousand dollars in that account that they did not spend last year. I ask, you know, I'd really like them to spend that money so we don't have to keep carrying it forward because it seems to happen every year. Although, it was explained that one of the projects that, that they do for their officers falls at the end of the year, so the timeline screws this a little. But all we're doing at this point is just allowing them, re-appropriating this money so the police department can use it for whatever they would like. For what?
Peter with a beer.
Uh, could, Councilman McDaniel's asking, could that ten thousand dollars go towards the, the cost of a new vehicle? I, I believe it's, it's a discretionary fund of the chief if he wants to do that, but I don't know the answer to that.
As long as no earmarks were put on the donation, I would say he's probably correct.
So, that is a possibility.
But I think the chief kinda has projects in line that he wants to use for whatever.
But you'll have a safety meeting that you attend. You can ask the chief then?
Yeah.
Anything else on that one? Okay. Resolution one nineteen dash twenty four. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Resolution one nineteen dash twenty four, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Well, there was a fire at Mary Mac Park. The old concession stand which was used for storage caught on fire and I believe in the middle of the day. We'd, uh, I don't think we had cameras that could see who did it or what, but there might, there were cameras that, you know, of people coming in and out of the park. I don't know where they're at with that. Surprisingly, they thought that building, the insurance company thought that building was worth twenty eight thousand five hundred and fifty four dollars.
And six cents.
And six cents, if you wanted to be exactly what Mr. Castle does. So, we have that money. We would like to take that money and appropriate that, uh, so that we can, uh, increase the appropriations. We're using that money so that we can put up another building in order to store the equipment that's at Mary Mac Park.
Is there an effort to get security camera, cameras to cover that building?
Yes, and we're gonna move it closer to where cameras can actually see it better also, and we're going to put fencing around it to protect it.
All right, I think Landon has something to say on this.
So, the plan is to move that garage, uh, storage garage up by just outside of sanitation, um, where there's currently electric. There is currently one security camera there that faces the, the drive right there at the corner. We would put up another security camera, uh, solely for the, the garage itself, um, use any fencing that we currently had at the community center. Kinda use the gates from that, um, so any additional fencing we might need, we purchase stuff like that.
The actual cost of the building, you thought was how much?
Uh, I think the quote was around thirteen thousand five hundred.
So, you're asking to appropriate this money for the entire project, not just the, the building that you're gonna put there, but cameras and?
Cameras, electrical work to run it to the, the building, um, any type of ramp we might need to build or something like that. Just to basically then outfit, outfit the building.
And, and, and I don't remember the answer to this question. Is that building gonna be, um, secured to the ground somehow? Or, or, or if, uh, you know, if the wicked witch decides to blow up another storm, are we gonna lose the building?
We shouldn't lose the building. I mean, but obviously it, it's, it'll be heavy, um, but, um, it could, if strong enough winds could push it around, so.
Okay.
But, I mean, it is a, I think it was a fourteen by thirty six, uh, metal storage garage, so.
Can I ask an additional question not to do with this? I didn't wanna call him up later, earlier. The, the softball leagues, um, do you have any interest yet?
There's a lot of verbal talk. Uh, we do have, uh, one team that has paid. I know that free agent list took off, so, I mean, there's at least probably two teams there. Um, some are open to playing the men's league or some wanna do the co-ed, so, I mean, I think we're looking for six teams in each league, so I think, um, we'll definitely get to, to have some softball down there this year.
I just wanted to ask while you were on camera so that goes out, so people can hear it, and if they want to, uh, put a team in, what's the best way to do that?
Uh, they can stop in the office here anytime between eight and four, um, or, like I said, they can shoot an email, uh, to us, Parks and Rec, and, and we can answer any questions that way, or reach out to us on Facebook.
Okay, thanks for indulging me with that. Thank you.
When does T-ball start and what's the age for that?
T-ball's ran through LEVC, so that has nothing to do with Parks and Rec.
Okay, you don't have any T-ball then?
No, not in Parks and Rec.
Probably stay close to the next one.
Don't go far.
Yeah.
Anything else on this one?
I'd make a motion, since we're getting close and this is Mo, March, April, I'd make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on this so they can get the money and get started on it.
We did get the money. The money has been received.
Got the money, okay.
A second.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
No.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Um, Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Okay, resolution one nineteen dash twenty four is passed. Onto resolution one twenty dash twenty four. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one twenty dash twenty four, sponsored by Michael Norman, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, here we are, pickleball. This is to increase appropriations, uh, so that, so that we can build this pickleball court. The, I think the concern in why it's being brought, uh, in, in the way we're bringing it is the original quote was given in October of last year. We're what, about nine, six, six, seven, eight months out? And the concern is if we don't act on securing, uh, that, you know, that funding for it, that that price could increase as everything has been, um, but that's pretty much it, so.
I do believe with the amount of people we had come tonight, which was a, a little surprising, but I appreciate the fact that people are gonna come talk about this, whether they want it there or not. I think it would be a disservice to do anything but other, leave it on so they can make the paper and that, uh, more people may get a chance to come and voice their opinions.
I would, how come we, we couldn't put this, like, by the basketball courts or even Mary Mac?
So, the location was discussed at public service, um, and, and we, and we weighed, what, four different locations? And it kinda came down to what, um, what already currently had the utilities that, that we would need and, or like to have with that pickleball court, uh, which was, uh, the restrooms, electric, wifi, lighting, stuff like that. So, it, so it's already there, so basically, once the courts are built, we know it's in a safe, secure location, um, and everything like that. So, I mean, the other locations were, uh, different part in, in Cowling Park, then over by the basketball courts and the parking lot and the ball diamond, um, and Mary Mac as well, so.
Cause, I mean, we currently don't have cameras or restrooms. They're at Park Avenue. Mary Mac, we don't have restrooms. I mean, what's the big deal, you know, putting it there at Park Avenue and Mary Mac? Other, I mean, we can get the Porter Johns. I mean, I don't know why we're, we're basing this off of restrooms and cameras when we don't have all those necessities already in place at those locations.
That's, that's why we didn't choose those locations, though.
But, I mean, wha, but why do we have to have a restroom and camera for the pickleball courts?
Just for the, the, the people that would be using them, just to, to offer them something, um, to, to make it easier on them. And, and it's, it's a, it's an unused space.
So, pickleball players are better than basketball players or people that skateboarders? Is that what?
Well, they're, they're thinking because they're older.
I mean, I just.
These are the, the talks we have and, and, and stuff like that, so as far as locations, I mean, that, that's what, what we discussed and that, out of the four, that's what we, you know, was deemed that was the, the most suitable location. These other locations would require more, more money to be spent, um, and, and stuff like that.
Aside from, like, the restrooms, electric, security, are the costs comparable just to build the pickleball court, no matter where you put it?
Um, I'd imagine, yes. Uh, they say the, the only thing, Cowling, we would have to remove the, the existing asphalt that's there just 'cause it's in such bad shape.
So, that would be an additional cost?
Well, it's something that, that street department, that they'd be able to handle.
If you put it at Park Avenue or Mary Mac, you'd still have to dig up that area.
But, does Mary Mac, is there access to electricity or security cameras there or?
Uh, well, the current wifi comes out of sanitation, um, so I'm not sure what that limit exactly is.
You don't need wifi like. You don't need wifi to play pickleball, do you?
What's that?
You don't need wifi to play pickleball?
For security, that's how the security cameras run off.
Oh, I see, I see.
So the security cameras wouldn't work without the wifi?
Not the current service that we use.
So you'd have to upgrade the service at Merrimack?
That or I'm not sure what's allowed there. I know what now is more server based. It's not, it's not stored in the cloud, correct? Basically, it's server based, so it needs tied into wifi to, to record, so.
So it sounds like you gave great consideration to existing utilities. Did you give any consideration to the recommendations by the contractors that would actually install the pickleball courts? Reviewing site selection of, of any sporting complex or center. It appears as though the number one concern for choosing an appropriate site location is, number one, appropriate drainage. And actually, site and moving away from residential neighborhood and drainage, I think, were the number one and number two recommendations from the contractors that would be building these facilities. What consideration did you give to those two owners?
Basically, I just talked to them when they came out and did a site visit there at Cowling by the basketball courts.
So you didn't give any consideration to residential neighborhood or drainage?
They didn't mention anything, wouldn't be an issue with drainage or anything like that. I mean, they see.
Why would they, I mean, they're trying to sell you a bill of goods. Why would they give you problems?
Yeah, but they're not going to put their name on something that's going to be underwater either, you know, so.
Does the flooding affect, I know it floods over there on Walnut Street, but does that flooding go into like the softball diamond or into basketball courts?
That flood zone, I think, is about halfway between, so up, so halfway, what's that, Columbia? Is that the other one? So about halfway towards Columbia. So then, but then we talked about there, if we would need to expand that parking lot, we don't want to take away from half and maybe expand the parking lot if we put pickleball courts in or anything else in right there.
Parking lot is right next to the softball field?
No, the one that's up at the corner for the pool, the basketball courts, the skate park.
And you have all the money and you're ready, but about $15,000, right?
So what the appropriation here is for is was using $60,000 of, from the Parks and Playground Fund, then pulling $40,000 from general to go into operating, and then the additional $15,000 to cover the quote was going to come from, from my existing budget.
If the site was to go to Walnut Street, where would, where would you, where were you looking at?
Over there, basically out of the floodplain there, but so more towards that parking lot. We didn't get into specifics exactly, but trying to determine, you know, we, we just kind of weighed what's around there and everything like that, and that's when the possible expansion of a parking lot, if it's needed in the future and stuff like that, came up. So John, Josh, Rich, I'll get you guys a copy of the packet. The other guys have gotten through the committees or whatever so that we can kind of see the layout, what it'll look like, stuff like that.
So this was brought up to finance last meeting, and then all of a sudden it was brought up to a different committee. How did that happen?
I can explain that. It was explained to me that there were only two people, two people at the finance meeting. One of those, they felt probably shouldn't have been a vote. It was, there was a motion made. It wasn't entertained. So they brought it to us, and I brought it back to the table on our end because of the timeframe.
And the timeframe being that this contract was procured or that quote was procured sometime ago?
Yeah.
Right, last year. And it was presented to the first committee in November of last year and then got pushed into 2024 and stuff like that.
And just to address any kind of concerns regarding my home's proximity to where this specific site location is being proposed, I have communicated with the Ethics Commission, and there is no ethical considerations regarding my rights as a property owner when it comes to matters pertaining to parking, noise, population, littering, all of these other, you know, peaceful occupancy of my own home. There is, I'm not ethically barred from having any conversations nor any, just like I sit here as a voting person, same as all of you.
Well, I, I think there's been enough people here tonight for us to at least revisit it. And I, you know, there were things that I found out tonight that, who knew, especially with the, with the 65 decimal, I would have never, ever even thought that. That's amazing to me. So, I mean, I, yeah, I, if someone wants to make a motion, but I say we keep it on at the very least.
I would like to make a motion to refer it back to committee for further exploration with regard to the additional, the actual additional costs of funding that would be required to incorporate services such as expanded utility, expanded security and bathroom facilities.
I'd like to make a comment. You know, we had basketball in Cowling on that spot. One of the reasons that it got moved, is what I was told, I wasn't here, was because of the noise and routiness. So we moved it down by more houses than what it was to begin with. I think the other reason was the interaction of the older aged kids playing there and the routiness around the younger kids was the other reason to move it, but.
I'll second it.
I made a motion to move it back to committee.
You don't have to vote on that, do you?
You just take, yeah, it'll just stay on.
The plan was, I think, if I'm not mistaken, also in service to bring it with the intent of taking it back.
There's still being another service meeting and another finance meeting before the third reading would occur.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wasn't trying to ram it through here.
I mean, this has been the two finance meetings without even discussing any, any finances. Basically, those numbers were off of discussions with Rex and Kenna of what she felt were, were good numbers to pull from general, so.
So we're taking it back.
Well, the full intent was for it to go back to committees to be discussed. It was just to get the readings in front of council.
But I have to say, I believe Councilman or Councilperson Traynor, I believe a correct motion on this, and I'm not 100% sure, but if she moves to take it back to committee and send it back, and there's a second, I believe that's what happens, and it would probably remove it from this agenda to do that, according to Roberts Rules from Order, which I'm not 100% sure on this, but I think if you refer something back to committee, that's what has to happen.
Yeah. I, I would just plead to council, because everybody liking to do the three reading rules, we're trying to do things in an orderly fashion. We want it to go back to committees. I agree, Greg, since the first and the second's been made, you're probably going to have to vote, but I, I would urge council to not do that because it is going back to committee. I don't want to take it off the agenda and start all over on the readings. So that's my case on that. You don't have to vote on it.
Right, since there's a motion and a second.
Councilman Norman?
I'm not really sure what we're voting for here.
You're taking it off the agenda, and if we bring it back, it's going to start over as a first reading again.
So, so basically what we're, what we're forcing the Parks and Recs to do is to bring to, because they're going to, they're going to have to get new, new bids and everything, correct?
That, that are going to then consider the other things that?
So basically, we're trashing this.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Right? We're trashing this and sending it back. So we're not really sending it back. What we're doing is, is we're trashing it and we're starting over.
Pretty much. Yeah, pretty much. Yes.
No.
Councilman Stahl?
No.
Councilman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
So it's a quarter three.
It stays on.
Is it removed?
So, yeah, so resolution 120-24 is removed?
No, no, no. No, it stays on.
It stays on. It's going back.
Committees will discuss it further, yes.
Can I, can I ask one more question about this before we move on? So Landon, or Mr. McKenzie, sorry. So this quote that you have, if you move that location, say we, we decide we want it at Merrimack Park, do you foresee? Do you have any way of knowing? Because I don't know. Do you have any way of knowing, is it going to significantly change the price of those courts? Or you have no idea, or?
No, I don't think so. I don't look for sure if it would change the cost of the actual installation of the courts and stuff like that, but if, you know, they amend it, it would be one hand.
Would be additional, yeah. Because that's my concern. My concern is if we, if we did it and we trashed it, we would have to come back and it's going to be a higher bid. It's always going to be a higher bid if you have to have it redone. So now we have two more readings to have these meetings to discuss moving it, because that's, that's the big issue. We, we got to find another place. It's what it seems.
I would just point out that this, that's not what this resolution states. The resolution is increasing specifically funding for appropriations to build a pickleball court at Cowling Park. So I'm not sure without amendment.
It'd have to be amended.
Why? We're going to have to amend it. I just, just concerned that the price is going to just go up.
What's the, like if it was at Merrimack Park and restrooms were installed, did you have an estimate on the cost for that?
An actual standalone restroom?
Yeah. Well, out of Merrimack Park, including the pickleball court, since there needs to be a restroom out of Merrimack anyway.
And they don't blow away.
Then once season's over, they come pick them up and they're gone, right? They don't stay there all year?
No, they do not. They'll, they'll get picked up by the same time people shut down the bathrooms there at Cowling, so October 1st. And then if, if for some reason Reynolds died down the ball diamond, we can get that one or two buildings or something.
Good to know. Okay. Under resolution 121-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved. Second.
Resolution 121-24 sponsored by Shannon Traynor, a resolution increasing appropriations.
We talked about this earlier. This is basically a necessary function of complying with our contract with Mid-Ohio. This is, we've already transferred all of the administration, transferred all of the revenue collection. This is now transferring remainder of the funds that would be used to pay bonds, debt service and other matters, since the city is no longer receiving the revenue stream, that this is a necessary move.
Can I give a slight correction to that? Just a slight correction. We're not transferring all the money. The auditor.
Oh, are we holding some back?
Had suggested we were going to hold back $500,000 from the two accounts being water and sanitary sewer. They were going to keep $500,000 in reserve just in case there's more bills that have to be paid down the road.
Correct. I stand corrected. Very good. Thank you.
It's okay. I have big, big numbers on my paper. That's why I remember it. You took the notes, but I have those numbers. Now, Mr. President, I would also like to address this. I have a, I still have a big problem doing this. In fact, due to the fact that this still needs to go before a judge, and we're not 100% approved on this. I would really hate to appropriate money to someone that has not been approved legally by the judge yet. I know that we're only on the first reading, but that will be my objection to any actions tonight on this.
Rex?
Okay. First thing, don't need to act on it tonight. It can, we met with Mid-Ohio today. It can go the full three readings, so there should be no issue. Kenna, with the issues that she had with bills being paid, we addressed that with Mid-Ohio, and that's been worked out. We don't really see any issues in that. It was mentioned during the meeting that everything has to be transferred prior to the court date. You can't, the court won't hear the case until everything's been transferred, is what we've been told. So, but you can.
What you're saying, everything has to be transferred over before the judge approves it?
Yeah.
Wait, did you just say it has to be transferred before the judge approves it?
That's what we were told. Yes.
Well, what if for some crazy reason he says, this ain't happening? How do we?
Then it, then it'll revert, it would revert back, I would assume.
Okay. All right. That's, that's kind of squirrely, isn't it?
It does sound a little weird, yes. I'll agree, but.
The whole thing does.
That was what we were advised, but like I said, there's no, you don't have to expedite this. It can go to three readings and we should be fine.
Anything else on this? Under resolution 122-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number, please?
So moved. Second.
Resolution 122-24 sponsored by Michael Norman, a resolution petitioning the state for state route changes throughout the city.
Well, yes. So I got the privilege to sit in on the meeting about changing our state route, state routes to the city. If you live in the Third Ward or you come through the Third Ward or you go down Main Street, right there at Center Street, you can see exactly why we want this done. It's a, it's a daily thing. Somebody hitting that pole, it, they, we fixed it, fixed it over and over and over again. So the plan is to basically make 56-56. It'll go through the town from south to north. We're going to make 38 go down to Midway, turn onto Midway and go out 38, which is probably the way it should have been. And then 665 will stay 665. So we're hoping that this will decrease the trucks coming through the downtown, obviously decrease the damage that's being done to the sidewalks all around the city from these trucks turning and trying to turn. That's, that's really, that's what it's about. There is an emergency clause on it because there, there was no set time given for this to be done. But like with everything with the state, they could call us tomorrow and say, you're done. And they kind of forewarned us and said, listen, within the next couple of months, make sure you've got the signs ready to put up. So that, to me, says this is probably going to be something they're going to, we're going to be able to move on quick. So quicker than it has been, let me put it that way. So that's, that's all I have.
So currently 665 dead ends at 56. And by this, now it's going to dead end to 38. Is that right?
Yep.
So 665 will extend to 38. And then basically 38 is going to extend over to 42.
So this is just to petition the state? They can turn us down, is that right?
Yeah.
I thought one of the issues was the bridge on 38 doesn't meet weight restriction.
On Midway, you mean?
On Midway, yeah.
We're doing a, what is it?
Bridge and swab of.
This will be 38.
It says current south main 38, we changed to 56, which is 56 now. So 38 will go this way too?
Yeah, 38 will only go this way now.
Yeah.
So I guess the state could deny our petition or whatever, if they wanted to. So I guess the state could deny our petition or whatever, if they wanted to.
Yeah, they, they can still deny, yeah.
But you were in a meeting with those folks from the state, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, being in the meeting, it seemed like they were definitely on board to do it. I, there were, there was, I mean, you can kind of read people, right? And there was a lot of nodding and there was a lot of yesing and, and I, and I, as soon as they said, "Hey, within the next couple of months, make sure you get the signs, signs ready," I mean, that kind of, you know, that's kind of an unofficial nod to me.
So this proposal was made a year and a half ago. But we tried a couple of things, but they weren't tried.
Yeah.
They didn't like it.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, Bill's hard to hear on the microphones. We have many people. Could somebody repeat what he's saying? Because it's very important.
Basically, we're going to do a, a highway swap of property. Fifty-six coming into town from the,
North.
North. Uh, half of that road belongs to the state, half of it belongs to the city. The city's going to acquire the state's portion, which would probably exceed the amount of roadway that the state's going to take back on. The state does not want to take on more roads.
But that'll be the southbound lane that we're going to acquire.
Right.
Because we own the northbound lane.
Correct.
Going out.
Yeah.
So, so I, so I do want to say this, since I was on the committee for the last two years, I know this was discussed so many times. And I had phone calls from truck drivers and residents, and I want to thank Mr. Long personally. I want to thank Mr. Castle, both of you staying on top of this. I think this is a great thing for the city. I mean, it seems like a minor thing, but when you consider the amount of traffic that comes through there now illegally, and when they realize it's illegal, they turn down those residential streets where they do not fit and they do all of the damage. This is only going to make th- this city so much better, and, and I do truly appreciate the work you guys have put in.
Along with that, I think we need to have some strict enforcement when the truckers are caught on our city streets over in the residential areas. I think, I think we need to not give them a warning. I think you need to get a ticket. And the word, because I'll tell you what, give them a ticket, the word will get out real quick and all that trucks' traffic will, will stop. So, I think a little bit of enforcement along with this, once this is approved, go a long way.
There is an emergency clause on this piece of legislation.
I make a motion to bypass the three reading rule.
Second. Now we're back to normal.
Councilman Needs?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
This is just for suspended.
Yes, right now we're just suspended.
No.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Moved her down.
Second.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Needs?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution one twenty-two dash twenty-four has passed. Onto Resolution one twenty-three dash twenty-four. Could I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one twenty-three dash twenty-four, sponsored by Michael Norman, a resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds.
All right, so as we all know, we had the election on Tuesday, and once again, the tax levy failed. This legislation will move the needed shortfall that we project will happen in our fire and EMS division. So we're going to, we're, we're just going to take it out of general fund and we're going to fund them. Uh, I'd just like to say, you know, this is, this isn't just about money. You know, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money. I guess it is just about money, but the motivation behind this isn't just about the money. It's about the people. We got, you know, when, when, I, I, I think we as a council or as a local government, both council and administration, we need to assure the people that, uh, they're going to be safe. And then, you know, our Plan B that was mentioned before this election included phrases like, uh, staff cutting and, uh, station closings. And from a citizen's point of view, that pretty much kind of scares me. And I'm sure there's other citizens out there that feel the same way, but it doesn't just affect me as a citizen. You know, I was, I was thinking, as a fire department, working there and hearing those same phrases, staff cuts and, and station closures, you know, we need to send them a message that they're, they're, they're secure in their job here, that we appreciate them, and, uh, and that we're going to support them. Um, they, this should not be, you know, they're under enough stress. You know, every time they go out, they don't know where they're going. They don't know if they're going to come back from that run. This should not be their, their stressor, that, you know, are they going to come to work tomorrow and be that guy that gets cut? Or are they going to, or are they working at the station that's going to be closed? And, uh, I think this is a, you know, this is, this is our showing them that we've, we've got their back. And, and that's why I sponsored it. Thank you.
Mr. Norman, first of all, I appreciate the fact that you want to jump right on this and make sure the fire department's completely funded. I, I, I want them to be funded too. I don't want to see any, any, uh, changes in our service. I think that we'll be able to do this. However, I'm going to scold you for a minute.
Okay.
Because, first of all, these are your projections, I believe, that you've worked these numbers up. We don't have these from the auditor. We don't have these from the fire chief that I've seen. So these are your projections, which could be more or less than what we need. But I'm sure it's a nice round number. And also, you know as well as I do, there's proper channels this could go through. And so, you know, I know that it's going to go back to finance. I appreciate you putting this on, and it's going to go back to finance. We're going to have to have that discussion. We're going to have to find out, really, from the auditor and the fire chief, where we're at, what we really need. Because in my conversation with him, oh, it's a month ago, maybe longer, you know, things weren't quite as bleak as maybe we thought. He thought maybe things were turning just a little bit. So hopefully, hopefully, uh, this will be more than enough, but we'll have to go through those procedures.
Well, just to rebuttal, Councilman Needs, I did check with our auditor, and she pretty much, because I asked her what she thought about that figure, and she confirmed that it's pretty accurate.
Okay.
But yes, it is going back to finance, and, and I never intended it to, to be brought and voted on and pushed through tonight. I knew it was going to go back to finance, but I, I, it's like I said, it's not about the money. It's about the gesture that our guys know that help is on the way, right? And that's, that's the message we need to send them, so that they're, they don't have that stress.
You just did.
What?
Told them help is on the way.
Help is on the way. I don't have, I don't have a fire helmet, but, you know.
Any more discussion on that one? All right.
No, we're at opposite ends of the table, so.
Okay, on to roundtable. Greg?
Oh, boy. I actually had three points I wanted to make, and I left those on my desk, so I don't remember what those were now. I think I remember two of them, or at least one of those. Um, it's a kind of a minor thing. Well, we talked about the Mid-Ohio regional planning, and that they seem to have new, um, resources available. I know that Rex had mentioned that they had an intern program, but it looks like there may be more available. Hopefully, I can find that again and/or Mr. Ri- Mr. Castle can read what they published, because like there might be something we're not aware of, but it sounds like he's on top of it. Secondly, I mentioned before about, and I stated it incorrectly, glasses for the eclipse were the event that was going to happen on April eighth. We do know the library has glasses available. I was told today that Merchant's Bank also has glasses available.
They do.
And, uh, I did see them for sale at Kroger. I actually mentioned this to the president of the Lions Club and said, "We're missing an opportunity because we should be handing these out just as a service project." And I don't know if we're going to end up getting glasses or not, but it seemed like it would fit well for what the Lions do. And then I want to thank everyone that, that came in to speak tonight. We had a lot of new faces. I do appreciate that. And I also, we have people here that didn't speak, but you came and you took your time to come and listen to see what was said. I appreciate that. I don't know what your concerns are. I'd be happy to hear them after the meeting if you didn't want to go publicly, but I do appreciate you guys that came, just to put your time in and be here.
Brent?
I'd also like to thank everybody for coming out.
Rich?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It was good conversations. I want to thank all city employees, and going back to Mr. Norman's spot, uh, when he talked earlier, I want, it just reminded me, I was talking to, uh, Bill Long one day, and he was out on the street. He was on his phone. And he was on the phone, and he was getting some measurements and trying to find out some money about this project, what we're standing at. About an hour later, a lady walked up to me and wanted to know, and I'll be, I'll quote it, "Why in the hell is a city employee on his phone?" And I, I was very polite, uh, and I told her. So, my point is, you can't always read something by what you see. So, going back to Mr. Norman's point, these people do a job. They do a service for us. And don't come down on them when you don't know what they're doing. You know, if you got a question, walk out there and ask them, "What are you doing?" And get an answer. But don't come down on them on Facebook. They're out there on their phones. They're not doing this, they're not doing that, because you don't know. You're not privy to what's going on. So, our people do a good job, and I just think everybody needs to lighten up on them. I want to thank fire department, police department, EMS. My God, I don't know where we'd be without them. You know, and like I said, before the bond levy went down, you know, one life is, you know, to me, it's worth point zero two five percent. You know, what if it's your wife, your child, uh, infant, child? You know, money can't replace that, you know, and there's, it's like comparing apples and Cadillacs. You can't compare. So, um, I just, how do I, I'm, I'm, that's all I'm going to say about it, because it really infuriates me when people put money over lives. That's not the way it's supposed to be here. A life is very important. I want to thank the Lord for watching over our city. We've had a lot of storms again last week. We're good. Um, I think the Lord takes good care of us, and I'm just very thankful for that. I want to thank all my council members tonight. Been a long session, but I think we did a really good job tonight. Got a lot of things taken care of and a lot of good discussion, and I appreciate it. I won't take up any more time. Thank you all.
Eddie?
Uh, appreciate it. Everyone who's here showed an interest in what's going on with the city. And also appreciate all the input that was provided tonight. It gives us, um, additional things to consider when we're making decisions up here for all the residents in London. Um, that's it.
All right, Shannon?
Uh, there was an event held, uh, downtown this evening by the eighteen-eleven Downtown District, the March shop. It had an excellent turnout. We had an Easter bunny on site and raffle baskets and lots of, uh, shop owners and merchants were opening their doors, holding special events. Saw lots of new faces, lots of new people to London, good turnout. So, um, thank you to that group for putting that on.
John?
I thank everybody for coming out. I find it very interesting that, that something you don't think would be a topic turns out to be like pickleball. I would have never guessed it. It's fascinating that the other side of the, the thing, it's kind of like one year ago, we tried to talk about cats on the leash, we had a lot of people too. And also, uh, when he was talking about people think they see something, pardon me, fifteen, twenty years ago, a tree commissioner, we was planting trees off in North Oak. And, uh, a lady called me and says, "There's people drinking out there, John." I says, "I'll go find out." And it turned out, the spot we was going to plant that tree had these big old wine bottles, or some kind of bottle, probably must have been back from prohibition type or something, I don't know. But they had to dig them up, and people just saw them, automatically thought that people were drinking. Just how perception and what's reality sometimes. That's all I have.
Michael?
Uh, first, I'd like to thank everyone who came out and everybody who's turning, tuning in. There's a couple of things I'd like to bring up, like circle back to the last meeting. Uh, the first one is, during the town hall meeting, I had said to the organizer from the Strawberry Festival that I had sent an email, um, to them from my city email, and I was incorrect. I did send an email, but that came from my personal email, so, uh, if, I, I'm going to take partial blame for her or for that organization maybe not opening my email, because they didn't recognize the address. So, uh, I want to apologize if, for, you know, not quite getting that right. And it was set on January eighth, if you do want to go back and look and see if you still have it. Secondly, during the last meeting, I also voiced my concerns, uh, about a piece of legislation that was, uh, changed from the time it left committee to council. My reasoning came across as, I, it, it came across as I was accusing, uh, the administration to, you know, doing something wanky. And, uh, that wasn't my intention. Uh, so, in the future, well, first I'm going to apologize that it came out that way, because that was not my intent. Um, my intent was to caution doing that in the future, not necessarily for this administration, but any kind of administration. So I would apologize for that, and I'll try to express my concerns in a more neutral manner in the future. Other than that, I hope everyone has a great weekend. I know there's a lot of, uh, Easter egg hunts out there this weekend. And I'm fifty-five, but I still wish I could get out there and find those eggs, you know? Uh, I'm that guy that's over there going, "It's over there, it's over there." So, uh, you probably don't want me at your Easter egg hunt, but, uh, yeah, so the Easter egg hunts, have fun with that. And, uh, I do have a meeting on Tuesday evening here for Ward Three or the public. We don't really have a guest speaker this month. I reached out to Mid-Ohio Water Sewer District twice and got no response for them to send a rep. I think it's important that they should, uh, maybe come out, speak to the public, let them know what services they offer, what their, you know, just, you know, just general things. So, uh, next month, I am hoping to have the, uh, the police department come out and, and tell us about their services. But other than that, have a great evening. Thank you again for coming out.
All right, yeah, just like to thank everyone that came out, especially the, the few that stuck around this entire meeting. I'm ready to go home as well, so, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.